Welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us for this third of six chairman's briefings for the legislative session, so to speak, for this year. Appreciate your all's attendance. And tonight, our topic will be, or today, our topic will be all about Knox County finances, which is very relevant, given the time of year that we're about to enter into budget season once again. And this is something that I appreciate the hard work from Chris Caldwell and his team. Put together lots of information for us. As always, if you have questions, either raise your hand in the participant window, do one of these and wave at me, as Commissioner Hill likes to do, or, or just, you know, send a text or something that says, hey, I want to answer a question, or of course, you can always stay until the end and there'll be a Q and A portion, but feel free throughout this, there's a lot of information, so feel free throughout this to sort of jump in where you need to. The whole point of these chairman's briefings is to take a topic warrants more discussion than, you know, a quick presentation at a commissioner or works out meeting and to have a more deep dive and a more concentrated effort to really kind of understand it. It's much more complicated than we can sort of hop into an agenda. So that's the whole point tonight. Of course, if, if you're able to just stay on mute until you have that question, it'll keep the background noise down. And if, for anybody who is not here, that is not able to attend, we will send out the recording and the presentation afterwards, so they can view it at another time. And then other notes, just real quick, is if you have upcoming topics that you're interested, there are three more scheduled, April 5th, June 14th, and August 9th. The only idea that I have a couple of my ideas of the own, there was an idea from Commissioner Skidmaker about learning more about virtual courtrooms and things from the shirt that you would like, please send them over, and I'll do my best to kind of put together teams of people to help present and bring relevant ideas to the table, so we can continue to sort of continuing education, so to speak. Commissioner Hill, did you want to jump in off the bat here?
Yes. My Zoom app does not have the hand wave.
Oh, okay.
I need an update. So that's why I always, that's why I always put my hand up. And also, Commissioner Jay, did you receive my, my recommendation for a a chairman's brief also on the zoning? Do you recall?
Oh, you're right. You're right. I did. I'm sorry. That's another one. It's in the hopper. Yes. Thank you for reminding me. I will, I'll refer back to that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Well, without further ado, as we enter our budget season, I have asked Chris Caldwell, our Director of Finance, to assemble his team and gather lots of relevant information for us and some other issues that will be coming up in finance in the next few years. And I'll turn it over him. And of course, everything in this presentation will be sent to you afterwards. So thank you for your hard work, Chris. Thanks, everybody in attendance, and take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Jay. Thank you for having us. I have Jennifer Bodie in the room, who mainly did all the, the work on this, but she likes to hide and stay in the background, so I don't make her get on camera. So that's okay. We'll get through this. I've got a PowerPoint, and I will try to share my screen the best that I know how, and we'll go through these, these slides with this information on it, and then you all stop at any time and ask questions. And we'll try to answer those to the best of our ability or get you an answer. And so I will begin by trying to share my screen, and we'll go from there.
We can see it just fine.
You see it? Okay, great. I'm gonna do one thing really quick. Okay. We will start out, what you see here is a slide of general fund revenues and expenses compared over the course of about nine or 10 years. And so what you see on the left-hand axis is dollar amounts, 120 million, 200 million, which will concur with the blue and orange bar graph. And on the right-hand side is percentages, and it goes along with the with the gray percent of, of revenue change. And so then you see a linear line that kind of just shows you what our trend has been with revenue. And so as you look at this, I can tell you that revenues from, from 11 to 20 have went from about 155.8 million up to 200 point 9 million. So that's substantial in increase in revenue expensive. Expenses has followed a similar path of 155 million up to 194.3 million. Our expenses in 20 were actually about 300,000 less than they were in 19. Part of that would be because we enacted a spending freeze to around the first of April related to the pandemic and the safer at home order. So we had some reduction in expenses there. And so that's why you see kind of a, a flat expense line from 19 to 20. And then what you would see there is that percent cha-change in revenue from 11 to 12, it grew by about 4.1%. And then you can go on and actually, 14, it was actually at a, at a negative point 88%. Then it continues on, growth in 16 was about 5.6%, which is the high. And then the growth from 18, 19, and 20 has been 3.8%, 2.9%, and 2.4%. And so that is percent of, of revenue growth. That is, that's healthy growth. A lot of our surrounding counties don't see the growth that we are really happy to see. That comes from us and the general fund. It can come from a number of places, but a lot of that is focused on property tax growth, sales tax growth, some growth in utility pilots. And one thing that's going away after this fiscal year will be the hall income tax. And so we account for that and, and the budget, but we won't see that anymore. And so I'm going to go on to the next slide. And it's basically looking at, at the general fund and what you see there. You're going to see the basically those percentage changes in revenue, though those are in blue, that's what we just went over. We overlay that with a percent change of, of expenses, which are, are in orange. And then the gray line is CPI. And so what you see there is through, from FY 12 to FY 20, you can see a growth in revenue, growth in expenses, a percent change in revenue, percent change in expenses, and that can compare to, to CPI. And then you can see the dotted line. And so those are, that's like a linear line that just flattens out that, that percent change. So you can see that our percent change in revenue starts out a little over 3% and gets down to probably about 2.8%. That expense line growth stays really constant at around 2.7%. And then you see CPI and just for, for, for reference, CPI hovers in there between, looks like one and a half, and goes up to about 1.8. And so that, that, those dotted lines, I think, is a good comparison to show you growth in revenue, growth in expenses come compared to CPI, both above CPI. You can see year over year, sometimes that's, that's not the case. But when you, when you average it out, that's how it kind of flattens out. We, what you also see, and for us, this is important, you'll see like a, like some jumps in FY 16 and FY 19 and expenses when you just look at the at the solid line. Part of that could be for us is if we know we're, we're having a really good year from a revenue standpoint, it's not uncommon for us to do transfers to other funds, transferred to special revenue funds, which could be like solid waste. Oftentimes, we, we have to try to help out to end the year. It could also be transfers to internal service funds, whether that is our self-health insurance fund, it could be our risk management fund, it could be our employee benefits fund. And so oftentimes, if revenues are ahead of, of expenses before we close out the fiscal year, we, we like to do transfers to try to keep those, for those particular type of funds to the positive and, and in good shape. And so
Chris, can I jump in? When I look at this graph, a couple of things, I want to just verify that jump out to me. If I look at the linear changes, although it's hard to kind of see, it does look like revenues are going down and expenses are going up. Those lines are, by the time we get to fiscal 20, are getting closer and closer and closer together. And CPI seems to grow, growing a little bit higher, but those sort of we're kind of heading towards a, a connection point or even an opposite reaction. And if I'm looking at how that's trending correctly, and then I'm also looking at, you know, fiscal 13, 14, and then again in 16, and then again in 19, where expenses are, are much higher than our revenue. And, and I'm assuming at those years, we're using fund balances or other things to kind of make it up. Those are years where we're truly not you know, where our revenue is below our expenses, or we're using fund balance to, to make up the difference. Is that accurate?
Somewhat. So I would say this, what you're looking at, though, is a percent change in, in revenue in those solid lines. And so when you see a bigger change in, in expenses than, than revenues, that's why you may see a bigger expense peak than a, a revenue peak. And so oftentimes, like in 16 and 19, we know that we cause those because of transfers to other funds. And so by us doing those, those transfers, that's what makes that, that revenue line and expense line come, come closer together. If, if we didn't do those transfers, and some cases, they are necessary, and, and other cases, it's just kind of us thinking ahead from the standpoint of what we think those funds would need in the future. And so oftentimes, when you see these peaks on the, on, on the percent change of expenses, it's really us doing that from the standpoint of doing transfers to funds that we think are needing help.
Chris, what does CPI stand for?
Consumer Price Index. And so it's a, as you probably are well aware, that, that, that the federal government uses a lot. You can look at it historically going back hundreds, 100 years, and it's, it's month over month, and you know, it's a lot, it's oftentimes used to try to see if your growth is keeping up with CPI, because CPI is how, how inflation happens and how growth happens. Any other questions on this slide before we move on? Okay, here's our property tax rate history. And so the next few slides, we'll, we'll talk about property tax and, and collections and reappraisals and things like that. And so what, what we wanted to show you here is in 1999, our tax rate was 277 and 2 thousand, it went to 332. That was, we, we get asked this question a lot. So that was the last property tax increase that Knox County has had. And so it was a 55 cent increase, and you all probably know the history behind that. I don't, I don't have to get into history. And so that's what that increase was. Then you'll see from 2001 to 2002, it drops from 332 to 296. Does anybody want to guess why that went down?
Every four years, reassessments.
Good job. And so reappraisal there. So, and then you'll see the next four years reappraisal again, it drops from 296 to 269. Four more years, 269 to 236. Four more years, 236 to 3 to 232. So you, you may note that that was a smaller drop as far as percentage and number. That was, you know, at the end of the housing crisis that happened, you know, 10, 11. So there was some concern there that we actually made for the first time in history, see a reverse of what we normally see during reappraisal. Did not happen. And so that means that value still went up, so our rate went down. And we'll get into, into that in a minute, how that, how that works. And then you'll see at the end of 17 to 18, their rate dropped from 232 to 212. And we've been at 212 for four years. Now, we historically have had a four-year reappraisal cycle. Assessor Whitehead asked for that to be extended for five years on, on the current model as they are implementing new software. And so we will go, so we will stay on the same, that reappraisal cycle would go out to 2022. Reappraisal will happen. I'm assuming, I'm assuming the rate's going to drop. We, we continue to see growth in property tax. So I think rate drops. And then after that, he will come back and ask commission to go back to a four-year cycle at that point. And so then we'll get back to our normal four-year cycle. And so I just wanted to show you a property tax rate history. And then let, let us get a little bit into reappraisal. We get asked a lot about reappraisal. And so it was going to be, we'll watch a video here in a second after this, and I can get it to play. But the, the state of Tennessee mandates that Knox County assessment to conduct reappraisals every four years, every four, five, or six years is really what it is. Tennessee Code Anticipated, and you can jot that down if you want to. 67-5-1601 provides for periodic reappraisal and equalization of all real property in Tennessee. Reappraisals allow the assessor to adjust property tax values so that every property in Knox County is appraised at fair market value. A reappraisal eliminates the inequities created over time by changing, by changes in the real estate, within the real estate market, ensuring fairness and equity for all property owners. The last reappraisal occurred 2018, and the next reappraisal is coming in 2023. Property owners are, are notified by mail of the reappraisal. So that's a little synopsis of what reappraisal is. So rivers are not allowed to increase revenue for local governments as Tennessee Certified Tax Rate Law requires the new tax rate to be reset to raise the same amount of revenue as the previous year, except for new construction. Because of recent developments, we likely have one of the lowest tax rates in metro government history. And so you know, we continue to go down. And so and I'm, this video will help, but just, just to summarize, what happens with, with reappraisal is it looks at everything in the aggregate. And so it takes the aggregate value, and as it says there, you, you can increase your, your, your revenue from a reappraisal. So if values go up 20%, rate goes down 20, 20% in the aggregate. So in the aggregate, it has to stay whole, but you can't, you can use new construction. And, and so that, so, so that part helps. And I think
Chris, before you start the video, I see Commissioner Smith's hand up.
Chris, you can go ahead and finish what you were saying. I just wanted to ask you something before we watch the video.
Sure. I was, what I was going to say is, and it actually equates to you. The one place that we get hurt at on reappraisals is it relates to utilities. And so we do get hurt there on reappraisals. The state's not changed that law. Don't know if they will change that law. But we do get hampered there because I don't think, and Brandy can, can jump in here. I don't think they, I think they are excluded from reappraisals. And so they don't have to go through that equalization phase. And so they just get to take advantage of the lower rate, not the higher values, if that makes sense. And so now, what happens is this, well, with your constituents, you know, unless your value changes, if, unless your home value changes by the same, by the exact same amount as the aggregate, your, your taxes will either go up or down, right? And so if, if, if you, if you live in an, an area that has saw 40% increase in property values, and the aggregate's 20, then your property tax is going to go up. And on, on the flip side, if you've only saw 10% growth, your, your, your tax bill is going to go down. And so it really looks at it in the aggregate. And sometimes that's hard for people to understand because it's not, and it's not individualized. It's more on the stance of, of aggregate. And so that's how that works. Are there questions before I try to play the video? Wish me luck here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, did you want to?
Yes.
Great.
Chris, this gets a little bit confusing at times when people look at our tax rate. And you can look at it and simply see that since 2000, when it was $3.32 at its current level of $2.12, that's a 37% reduction. Now, when we do the aggregate, you know, the tax, property taxes we collect today versus what we collected in 2000. Do you have something with that number?
We
I think you went back to two, you went back to 11.
I may have back a little farther.
What I'm trying to get at is, how much of that rate reduction is due to inflation? You know, whenever we do our aggregate, do we go back to what our aggregate was four years before? Or do we do it, you know, like, like they're doing it right now? Will they base it off of this year's tax base? Or off of what it was four years ago when it was set at, at, at the rate it was four years ago?
Honestly, that'd be a really good question for Assessor Whitehead. He's the one that has to certify the tax rate, and he knows that, that formula much better than I and what goes into it. I can tell you, just historically speaking, in 2011, we, we collected about 223.6 million in current property taxes. And so in FY 19, according to this, we, we collected 266.3. So 43 million increase from growth, and that's, and some of that is construction growth, and as you pointed out. As far as what goes into the calculation of reappraisal, he has that, and he knows that. I know it's, it's complex. They, they account for certain things, and I think can account for OTH, too, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, I was just trying to get an idea of what, of what, what, what percentage of it is based upon increased market values through reassessment and what, what component of it is due to actual growth?
That's a good question. I think he, he probably could give you at least the last one that he did would show that. And, and it would be a good thing to, to share. I'm gonna try to share this, you know, I'm gonna try to share this, this video from the Trump Trump supporters website, so it's easy to find. But let me see if I can get this to pull up.
Larson, you did say you're sending all this to us.
Yes.
I'm gonna try to share my screen a different way. I don't guess you all are seeing the video now, are you?
We are not. Usually you have to stop sharing and then reshare if it's on a different screen. Yeah. And then you want to maximize that screen. Once you hit play, there should be like an expansion button in the bottom corner. There you go.
Meet Steve. This is Steve's house, and this is Steve's property assessment notice. If you own property in Tennessee, it's the job of your county assessor to figure out how much it's worth. Depending on which county you're in, an updated value for your property is determined every four, five, or six years during a process called a reappraisal. And since property values generally go up over time, there's a good chance that your house, commercial property, or land will be appraised at a higher value. Steve's property has gone up in value, so what does this mean for his property taxes? Here's the good news. Higher values during a reappraisal do not necessarily mean higher taxes. Tennessee law requires the state work with your assessor and county mayor to adjust your property tax rate. So when appraisals go up, your tax rate goes down. It's known as the certified tax rate. The concept is simple. The new certified tax rate will generate the same amount of tax revenues for your city or county as the amount billed in the previous year. Let's say all of the properties in Steve's community increased in value by an average of 20%. Steve's house also increased 20%, but thanks to the certified tax rate, he should pay just about the same amount in property taxes he paid last year. The only way the certified tax rate can be exceeded is if Steve's county commission or city council decides to hold a public hearing and adopt a new higher rate. When you receive a new property appraisal, it helps to understand how you're protected by the certified rate. But pay attention to your local government meetings to know if leaders are thinking about exceeding it. Remember, the assessor values your property, the county commission or city council determines how much you'll pay in taxes.
You're back on the
Is that better? There we go.
shared screen. There you go.
So that
Commissioner Hill, did you have a question before we move forward?
Yes. So ju-just to be clear, I hear this over and over, and I need to keep saying it to make sure I am communicating it correctly. So even though we will have natural growth and and increase in our property values, the amount that we pay in that new value will, is actually adjusted down because the tax rate cannot go up. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I think, and so I think the video does a better job than I can. Ultimately, they, they won't, they don't allow you in the aggregate to make money off free appraisal. And so they do allow you to capture a certain amount of growth of new construction, but of the existing homes that was on the last free appraisal compared to the current reappraisal, you have to adjust the rate down. It, it will allow you new, new construction. So that is just pulled out, but home to home, you know, what, what was there to what is there correct? You, you cannot a government cannot increase its revenues off free appraisal. That's why the rate gets adjusted down.
Okay, so the only way so even though we have all this new construction, and, and of course, we capture that because it is new building. But in order to actually on a level playing field, increase our revenues per se is through a tax increase.
Yes, I, exactly. So
All right. All right. Thank you.
What, what they say, and even on the, on that video, is you've got to have a, a public hearing, a public meeting saying it and explicitly talking about it. And so And so, um, yeah, they, um, they don't allow you quote unquote to back into it through, through reappraisal.
Commissioner Daley has a question and then Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Daley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I want to follow up on that. We got a neighboring county that he has told me a couple of times that when they do reappraisals, they set their tax rate at a little more than what the appraisal has come back at. And I told him, I said, I don't think that's legal.
It's not legal. And so, so
They do it well. I don't know if they publicly
But you have to call a tax increase.
Correct.
I don't know if they're announcing that they're going to have a tax increase at that meeting or not, but I'm going to follow up with them just to see. But that was, uh, interesting. I, I noticed that on the video. That was a great video.
And so, and so just to give you some sort of, of indication what can happen. So if, if, you know, like we go out two pennies on, on the tax rate, like two twelve, right? And so if, if reappraisal can, can, can game back and it was two point one two six, they would probably allow us to go to two point one three, right? But on the flip side, if it's two point one two four, they're going to make, they're going to make you go down to two point one two. Now, you can go out four decimal spots on reappraisal. So the city goes out four, uh, we have historically just did two. But you can go out four spots, but so you can get a little bit of growth there, but ultimately it's going to balance itself out probably over time. But, uh, the neighboring county you're talking about, if they're going up above that, in theory, they, they're supposed to have a public hearing as that said, and then voted in. And you can't, you know, it's, you know, saying what it is. I mean, they could say, they could say it's because of, of, of inflation or whatever, and that's okay. Uh, but they, they explicitly have to say that they're increasing the tax rate above what the reappraisal rate came back at.
Mr. Smith?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Chris, you kind of went, uh, to one of the points I was going to go to, and that's the four digits. And, you know, I've told you that after depending on the, the amount of the round on the four digits, after you go four cycles, four or five cycles, you can be getting close to pushing a point if it goes the wrong way. I did have a, a question that we never had to deal with and hope to God we never have to deal with, but it is the inverse of what we're talking about with inflation. If we did have deflation, the devaluation that happened with the reassessment, uh, I know it's always said that it has to remain revenue neutral. Would that mean that there's a possibility that taxes could, tax rate could increase?
Great question. Uh, I'm going to answer both. Um, yes.
You, um, can you unshare your screen while we'll have the discussion and then come back to that so we can all see each other? Thank you.
Great question. Um, yes. And so what, what the, what TCA code says and what the state says is simply this. And we thought we may have saw that back in, uh, let me get my notes, I'm sorry. We thought that may would have happened back in two thousand and fourteen. We went from two thirty-six to two thirty-two. There was some concern because the four years being examined included the, uh, the bubble bursting in the housing market and all, and all the, the negative stuff that followed. So there was some concern that our rate actually may go up because values went down, right? Um, and so, yes, you can have the inverse of that. Historically speaking, for Knox County, we've never had that. Uh, we've always had growth. That's the closest that we've came. And so, but yes, rates can go up if values go down. And to, to your other point, by not going out for, four digits instead of two, right? And so let's say the next reappraisal, let's say that rate for us comes in at two point oh oh four nine, right? So then we would have to round down to two even, correct? So what is that point oh oh four nine worth to us? And they want to take a guess?
Couple hundred thousand.
I'd think it's probably closer to five or six hundred thousand now. And so substantial, right? I mean, i- it's substantial, even if it's two or three hundred, hundred thousand substantial. So, uh, you know, we can, once that reappraisal happens again, we can have the conversation. Again, does it make sense to go out four decimal spots? Uh, we do, we have to pull in the assessor and the trustee just to make sure that it doesn't cause them any issues because you always round to the nearest dollar, of course, on, on, on property taxes. But ultimately, uh, it is more precise to go out to, to that fourth digit. I mean, you're being more precise and you take out the rounding component.
Is there a, um,
I'm sorry?
Is there a consensus across the state of two digit versus four? I mean, or is it all?
The four, it's, it, it varies. Um, I think more cities may use four digits than counties, is, is what I recall seeing. Now, keep in mind, it's been four years since, since we looked at it.
Chris, i- if, if I remember correctly, and I may be wrong about this because I often am, but it seems like if you go to four, you make a commitment to round up or down regardless of how the cards lay on the table.
Correct. And so, and so if you go to four, then you're going to be at four and, and, and it is what it is. So if, 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 if you're going out four digits and your number is two point one two six seven, you can't ask them to go to two point one three. You're, you're, you're set in stone. You're correct.
Commissioner Skunmaker, Beeler, and then Hill. Skunmaker?
Thank you, Chairman Jay. Um, it's interesting if you look at citizens who have been in their homes for about fifteen years or longer. Uh, they're paying less in property taxes today than they did fifteen years ago. But the unfortunate part to that is our cost of delivering services has dramatically increased. But if somebody changes their home, you know, every five or six years, they're not going to see, uh, that, you know, that they have had a property tax, uh, decrease.
There's no floor is what you're saying, correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think there's a floor. I'm assuming you get to a certain point to where you probably do have a floor, but it's not really set in stone of what that floor is.
No, no, but I mean, I, I guess Commissioner Skunmaker, what you're saying is that like, I think we saw this in the last couple of, uh, last few articles that were really in depth on this, that somebody who may have paid eight hundred dollars at one point, now paying six hundred dollars. And, and although everything that we provide as a service continues to go up, there, there's no like bottom floor. They, they, and then if we go through another reappraisal, they could go down and down and down and keep going down over time to a point where they're using the same level of county service, but they're paying half as much.
Correct. Ultimately, what, what, what happens is this, and so I'm going to give you an example of where I think, um, Commissioner Skunmaker's e- example would come from. If, if growth, every time there was reappraisal and the growth was ten percent or twenty percent, if that homeowner fell, what, what fell below that aggregate growth amount. So if it was twenty and they were at fifteen, and if it was at ten and they were at five, so they would, they would see a decrease in their property taxes because ultimately in the aggregate, they're staying below what the, the county is seeing as an average growth. That makes sense.
Yeah, I wonder if there's a way, I don't know if it would come from the property assessor, the trustee, or from you all to get some sort of in-depth data report showing, okay, you have, I'm just making this up, you have a hundred thousand properties, you know, in Knox County and, and looking at a snapshot over the last twenty years and seeing where was, where were they, what were they paying before and what are they paying now and kind of trying to categorize, you know, to better understand if we have, you know, if, maybe that only impacts ten percent of the thing, you know, of the population. You know, just trying to get better, understand that data with, is that something that, who, who would pull that and how, who would decipher that?
Either the assessor or the trustee. And I don't know exactly, it may more be the, the assessor, but I, I, I'm not certain that. I think what you would hear, so if you took that argument to the state as an example, what you're going to hear, well, for every person that we can talk about that has went down in taxes, they're going to point to somebody else who's went up because they're living in an area that's, that's, that's exceeding the, the growth that, that's on average. And so they're going to
Be interesting to know that, like, just what, how many people are we talking about that would go up and would go down and would be in the middle of new growth? I don't think we have a concept of, of what new growth looks like versus some of the
I think the assessor would, would be the, the, the one to contact because ultimately they do the reappraisal every four years, and so they could probably have a history of that.
Commissioner Beeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to comment on Commissioner Smith's question, but I think I want to comment on Commissioner Skunmaker's too, because I think they both make great points. You know, obviously in twenty years, we've not had to deal with the situation of, of the rate going up. And things are great right now, but you know, having worked in the register's office during those years, we were probably only saved by the way the reappraisal cycled. In any one, if it had been in any one of those other three years, it probably would have gone up. But, but the other point, and I, and to, to Commissioner Skunmaker's point, you know, when you, when you only raise revenues through growth, which is obviously if, if there's no tax increases, that's what you're doing essentially. Theoretically, and this may not be actuality, but theoretically, when you do that, you're only, you're only increasing revenue in proportion to the number of people that your service is increasing to. You're, you're not really taking into consideration new services that may be required, more expensive services, as Commissioner Skunmaker pointed out, or higher quality of service, you know, expectation wise, uh, that, that, that may happen as, as technology increases and as time goes on. So, uh, growth's a great way to increase revenues, but some, it may not always increase them in proportion to what's expected.
Commissioner Hill, I think you had your hand up next, and then we'll circle back to Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. So to your point, um, Commissioner Beeler, um, all the growth in the world isn't, doesn't really, especially if our growth tends to be more residential, where the services run a little higher, I believe, than, you know, a large commercial piece, then that doesn't even really allow us to maintain because we still have improvements that need to be made just to stay neutral, just to stay even. Roads, you know, and that type of thing still need attention. Going back, Chris, to what you were saying though about the, um, taking it out four places instead of two. And if Randy, I think you said if we commit to do that, we, we have to stay with that. However, how is that a lose? I mean, it either stays the same or, or it goes up. If, if it has to hit that five point O or, you know, but yeah, five point five O.
Yeah, I don't think, so I think going out four spots is more exact. I think what Commissioner Smith was saying is that if next year we were at point, you know, we were, let's say, two dollar, two point oh oh five five, and we asked to go to two point five one, or two point oh one, they would allow us to do, to do that, but you're missing that if you, if you go out to, to four. And he would be the first to tell you, you know, it's a, it's, it's, it's risk reward, right? So ultimately, if it was two point or two point oh oh four nine, that they'd make you go down. And so, but, but you're just ma- missing that upside if you still just go out two decimal spots.
Is that a voting matter?
Well, basically, when you all recertify the tax rate, um, I think at that point it comes to you all. And then you all nor- normally recertify in August, I believe. Uh, I think it's August or September. And so, um, at that point, uh, whatever the assessor brings, you all can talk about, okay, if it's, if he, if, 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 if he brings it going out two decimal spots and you want to say, hey, what is it going out for, then you could, could look at it.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Smith, did you have something else on this topic before we move on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. As Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, first I'd like to point out that in, in the scenario where someone's taxes are decreasing, the way we do this by the aggregate, that also means that this person's home value is not appreciating as fast as the rest of Knox County homeowners or the peoples that do go up. Uh, that is why their taxes go down. It's a relevant figure. Also, we're talking about growth property taxes and I may, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are actually a sales tax generated revenue type of government entity. The bulk of our revenue comes from sales tax, correct?
No, we get the bulk, we get bulk, we get more from property tax than sales tax, but both are, are substantial.
They're, they're pretty substantial. How, how, what is the division of that?
So as an example, we collected in FY twenty, almost two hundred and seventy million dollars in property tax. I think in sales taxes, like one seventy.
Okay, but that's not factoring in the state and the state's contribution to our education system. At the overall, uh, and, um, so when somebody moves here and they pay their property tax, a lot of what we're really trying to capture is their sales tax. And some, to some degree.
Correct.
If I could, just one more, is the, um, and I don't know much about this, is the freeze that occurs for our seniors if they're below a certain, uh, income guideline? Is that, uh, does that affect us greatly with our population aging?
It's also handles the property tax freeze. It's based, um, off a certain age and a certain, I think, um, wage demographic. I don't know the impact that, that has on us. And it's not that the state actually has to approve it every so often. It's, it's really done more at the state level than here.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any more questions. So Chris, I think you can reshare and pick up on the next slide.
What you have here is left-hand side is property tax collections in dollars. And the right side would be property tax rate. And so the orange line is the tax rate and the blue box is our current property tax collections. As you can see there, uh, healthy growth in property tax collections year over year. As mentioned before, uh, property taxes from FY eleven, which was two hundred and thirty point nine million to FY twenty was two sixty-nine point five. So substantial, substantial growth, uh, right at forty million dollars. And as we talked about, that's just in growth. And so, uh, we do and are fortunate enough to have substantial growth. Most counties don't see the growth in property tax that, that we see. And so, um, and take that one step further. We often talk about a penny on the tax rate as we talk about, uh, that and what that's worth. What you see on the left-hand side is the, what a penny is valued at. And then what you see on the right-hand side is the tax rate, the orange line again is the tax rate, the blue box is the penny. What one penny is worth. And so as you can see, we are currently, um, just under one point three million dollars per penny. It's actually one million two seventy-four per penny. And so, um, that's substantial as well. And that helps us, of course, to, to bring in revenue. We actually did not, uh, we did not put any type of growth into property tax as we did the budget for FY twenty-one as we had conversations with the state. But on the report that we sent out, the, the monthly financial update, I would point out that, um, to date, um, let me get to it. To date, I think we were about five percent ahead. Excuse me, six percent ahead on current collections through December, uh, than, uh, what are our five-year averages? Uh, then, uh, what are our five-year averages through, uh, our five-year average? Was about 51% and we're at 57%. And so we have saw really. Um. Uh, really. Increased. Ability to pull payments, uh, for property tax. Uh, for the first, uh, few months of this fiscal year. And so, uh. We, we for sure, if that continues, will beat what we had budgeted per penny on property tax. Uh, and, um. You know, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a bad. Place to be. It could be the alternative and we wouldn't be, be hitting those numbers and then, and then we'd be in a bad spot. So it really. Uh, isn't a bad spot to, to be in. It's just, uh, as we talked about. Budget back. Six, well, actually eight months ago now or whatever or so, you know, we had a lot of conversations with the state about what was going to happen, you know? Uh, property tax, sales tax, and, um, we tried to follow their lead and. Um, we've really besides a couple of months, not saw a drop off. And so, uh, that's not a bad thing. It's a positive thing. Um, and something that, that we continue just to be amazed by. And so, um.
Chris, before you move on, I see a hand up from Commissioner Smith.
He, he can finish. I just want to ask him a question before we leave.
Party tax. Go ahead.
Um, Chris, do you have like a, a pie graph that breaks down where our $2.12% of, uh. Property tax goes? So everybody has a good understanding of what property tax funds?
Yeah, if you actually go into the monthly financial update that was sent out.
Yeah, that was attached to the invitation was the monthly.
There, Randy, there's actually how it's divided up with a, a dollar on there, which is, it's pretty nifty. And so it shows by the pennies how it, it's just distributed out. So that's pretty interesting. It shows you actually by a dollar bill. I don't think that Jennifer actually took a, a dollar bill and cut it up, but, um, it was kind of something that she found.
Uh, it's on page, uh, looks like it's on. True. Page 10 of that document. It's a 42% general fund, 38% general purpose school fund. 20% debt service. So 42 general fund, 38 general purpose. And 20% debt service. And then the, uh, the breakdown is essentially 212. It's 89 cents goes to the general fund. 80 cents goes to schools and 43%, 43 cents goes to debt.
Chris, does this, I had a question. Does this graph that you're showing, I mean, does it, does it tell you anything that we're leveling off? In the last essentially three years?
No, I think what makes it look that way is, uh, what we have on there. For 20 and 21 are budgeted, no, numbers are not actual. And so if, if, if you have actual, you see more, more of, of a, of a trajectory. Um, I'm trying to think what I have. Um, and so that's more of, of looking at it from a budget standpoint.
Okay. Um. Not seeing any other hands up. So if you want to continue on.
So we looked at, at, at property tax rate for us compared to, uh, some of the, of the bigger counties. And we threw in there severe as well. And so you can see, and this is just. The county tax rate. And so you, as you know, in Davidson, they've got some urbanized. Districts and we of course have the city of Knoxville, Hamilton has some as well. So. They were kind of varied. So we didn't want, we thought about putting. Just the county and then one that's combined, but it was kind of varied. So what we thought we'd look at is just the, the county tax rate. As, and where we, where, where, where we sit among those, those counties. Um, I think. Of course, we're at 212. I think Rutherford was at about, um. Um, I'll just go through them here. Uh, Shelby's at 405. Uh, Davidson in the general service areas at 379. Hamilton is 277. Williamson County is 222. Rutherford County is 222. We of course are at 212 and Sevier's at 186. I'm going to move on to sales tax now, if that's okay. Go ahead.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, before we move on to sales tax, looking at this property tax, uh, graph bar, um. I am a bit curious as to what, what. Davidson and Shelby and Knox and Hamilton compared to us when you add city taxes on top of the county taxes, uh. We live in an area where roughly 40% of our people that live in the county are also city taxpayers. Uh, do you remember offhand what that looked like?
We got it from the state website. We, what I'll do is we'll just do a little. Give you like an estimate on each one about how much it is, but it's going to vary about where they are. And so we can send that out in an email.
It'd be really good to see.
Um. Looking at sales tax now, and you can kind of see, um, what, what this is. And so. You see that, um. 12, 13, and 14 was, was pretty flat, uh, but from, uh, from 11 to 20, we've increased. Um. About 50 million dollars in sales tax. Uh, we're trending right now in FY21 of hitting probably above 190. Uh, we had 179.4 in FY20. And so thus far in 21, if we continue the trend we're on, uh, we'll probably break 190. Um, but, uh, you know. Sales tax is volatile, right? And so, and, and, and we talked about that in the past. And so. You can go back to eight or nine when we dropped 10, 10 million. So it happens. Uh, but, uh, since FY. 13, we've kind of been on an upward type of, of, of trajectory. Uh, there's no doubt that we were helped by the change in the law related to, um. Um, internet. Sales tax. And so, and so that helped, uh, as we finished out FY20. And got into 21. And so, uh, we think that that is positive. Um. Looking at this, what you have here. Is. Sales tax collections, uh, by the counties that we talked about as it was related to property tax, but just looking at it from a sales tax perspective. And on the bottom, you can see there, as you know, uh, you, there's an option on a half a penny on the sales tax that you can take advantage of via referendum. And so, uh, you can see that Davidson, of course, is lea, leads the state in sales tax collections. Uh. Shelby is, is behind them. Um. There's some space between those two and us and we're third. Um, and then you can kind of see. Williamson's have had the biggest growth since FY18, right? So you can see Williamson's basically caught. Hamilton and, and Rutherford. And then you see the bottom line there of, of being severe. Then on the very bottom there, we put what those tax rates were. The, the local option rate. So Davidson is still at two and a quarter. Um, Hamilton's at two and a quarter. We're at two and a quarter. Rutherford, Sevier, Shelby, and Williamson's at 275. And so. Basically you have, uh, almost an even split there to, uh, as to where people are, where, where those communities are. Um, and, um. Um, we. Will get asked, and I, I assume this question was coming, so I thought I came prepared. Um. What's that half penny worth for Knox County, right? And so. Uh. We base this off of, um. Co, of collections for 20, okay? And then we used what the normal percentage breakdown is between Knox County. City of Knoxville. And Farragut, okay? And so. Uh, just so you were aware, city of Knoxville accounts for like 67.25% of, of sales tax. And Knox County's at 26.44. Uh, Farragut's at 6.29 and the remaining 0.02 is actually Zoo Knoxville. But.
Can you, can you repeat that real quick?
Sure. Uh, not, uh, city of Knoxville, this is on, on average, accounts for 67.25%. Of local option sales tax. Um, Knox County accounts for 26.44%. Uh, Farragut's at 6.29 and Zoo Knoxville is at 0.02.
Okay, thank you.
And so, uh. That half penny, uh, we estimate to be worth based off FY20 numbers. Um, about 38 million dollars. Um.
Wait, wait, just to be clear. So if we, if our local was 2.75 instead of 2.25, we would have plus. 38 million dollars.
Right. Uh, so here's the kicker to that. Okay. So that, the reason I gave you the percentage is very important. So, um. Uh, ha, half of that by state law must go to schools, right? And so, uh. The amount that the city of Knoxville, uh, would get of the 38 million is 25,055,000. And of which. 12,077,500 would go to schools. Knox County's piece would be 10,047,200. Of course, half of that would go to schools, which is 5,23,600. Farragut's piece of the half penny would be 2,390,200. Half of that to schools is 1,195,100. So. 18,996. 18,996,200 would be directed to, towards schools. Um, the city of Knoxville would get the second highest piece of the 12 million with the 12.7 million. Knox County would get the 5 million that we discussed. And, uh, Farragut would get one point, right, right at 1.2. And so, uh. That's the half penny. And so what happens? So how does that, what happens with that half penny? So. My understanding that if that ever happens, it's a referendum on the ballot, uh, that would, uh, have to be. The city, the town of Farragut and Knox County to impact all three. Uh, because it, it could be where it passes one and not the other. Um, and then you just have differing tax rates.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification. Uh, Commissioner Daly, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what is the city's tax rate? What's, because I don't know. Can you break it down? Is it, uh? Do they get this? 2.75 or what?
They get two and a quarter. So it's 2.25. It's the same as ours. Um, and so their local piece is 2.25. Now, what the city does, as does Knox County. And it's because of referendums back in the 60s. Um, they, we end up giving as well as the city. 72.228% of sales tax collections to schools.
Okay. I had another question, but I forgot it. So if I think of it, I'll put it in the chat box. Thanks.
Just ask again. It's okay. I like it to be informal. Um, and so I think, uh. So, you know, we talked, uh, back in the 60s, there was a referendum on, on, on the ballot for a penny of local option sales tax. That first penny for both went to education. And so. There would have been two referendum cents, both, I think, uh, one's half a penny. And then one's 0.75. They halved them. Towards schools and then general fund on the city and the county. So you get into, into fractions, and I'm sure you all love fractions. And so you eventually get to 13 eighteenth of a penny. And when you do the fractions, that's how you get to the 72.228%. Uh, Richie loves to do fractions. And so I'm surprised he didn't know that in Shama right then.
Hey, Chris, uh, I just remembered the, uh. That extra high cent, the state could take that at any time if they wanted to. Is that correct?
Sure. I mean, ultimately, um, you know, I guess if you're the state that's on the table, uh, you know, they've not had a, uh. Uh, bad fiscal year. I mean, technically, I guess, as a. Was, was, was budgeting for FY21, uh, last year in the session. They, like most, had kind of a dark scenario. They didn't try to get it then. Um, but to your point, yes, ultimately, um, if it's on the table, it could be there for them to get.
Mr. Chairman, I had a follow-up question to, uh, Commissioner Day, uh, Daly's question. When he said that, it, it, it made me wonder something in my head. So. I'm assuming that the cap in the state is capped out in places like Sevier, Shelby. And Williamson's and Ruff, Rutherford said at the 2.75, that, that half a cent's not there. Laying in the margin for the state to take. So are you saying the state could come? Take a half of us and couldn't do anything to them?
I guess potentially, I, I'm not, um. Uh, I'm not an expert, but I'm assuming they could make the rate the same across the board. Um, and if it's there, they could take it, I guess. Uh, I've never, I've never asked that, that question of the state. So I can't tell you that I know that for sure. Uh, I will say this, um. When, uh, the state, um, a few years ago passed the gasoline tax, I think in that gasoline tax bill. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that it allows you to add another penny on. Of local option sales tax if it's for infrastructure, right? So if it's for roads. So I think it actually allows you to go up to 10.75%. Uh, I think Randy was shaking his head. So I, I think I remember reading that. I don't know of anybody who's taken advantage of that. I think when Nashville had the conversation or Davidson had, had the conversation about, uh, you know, the underground, uh. Rail system and, and, in the city, I think they were contemplating that as a revenue source, but that didn't pass the vote or so it never happened.
Commissioner, Commissioner Daly, I see your hand up again.
I'm sorry, Chairman. I'll take it down. I'm good.
I just want to make sure we got everybody. Um, all right. Other hands on this? I think you're clear to keep going, Chris.
Uh, we're going to talk about engineering now. What you have here is just similar to that first general page, that general fund slide. Uh, uh, the amounts on the left, the, the pers, the percentage is on the right, revenues in blue, expenses are in orange. And so you can kind of see there that revenue growth has, uh, been, uh, there for engineering. Um, and, um. Get to my slide here. Um. Um. The last few years FY16, they saw about a 5.6% increase in revenue, 17, 1.3, 18, 3.8, and 19. 2.9 and 20 was 1.9. Um, and so. Similar on the next page. Um. What you see here is what we saw before, not compared to, to CPI, but you can see. Uh, the revenue and the expenses, um, are kind of parallel there as, as far as those linear lines. Um, and, uh, one thing the engineering does do is there's a transfer from engineering to solid waste. So, so that, so that's kind of a built-in expense. Um, and so, um. Um, and the and the reason we're showing engineering in a minute, you'll see more. Uh, gasoline tax, right? And so it it's a big, uh, it's a big revenue. It's the biggest piece of. Revenue for engineering and public works fund. Uh, you can see that uh, um, growth and eighteen, nineteen and twenty. Um, twenty kind of capped off goes at the end. If you remember in April, there was. Um, safer homeowner by the governor, so gasoline tax went down. So we were really humming along through February and then it kind of. Uh, peeked back off. They really expected a big downturn in gasoline tax for FY twenty one. They actually told. Told us to budget a twenty percent decrease. We budgeted about fifteen percent. To date, we've only saw about a seven percent decrease. So that that's trending in the right direction. This slide here. Is more what I wanted to focus on. So what you have in the kind of the till colored boxes is the gasoline tax collections. Uh, the upper line is price per ton of paving. And the bottom line is miles of roads paved. So we that we we talk a lot about paving and what goes into to paving and where all that is. Uh. What you can kind of see there is there's a little bit of a core correlation between gasoline tax. And the price per ton of asphalt versus what actually gets paved. And so you can see there was a drop off from nineteen to twenty. In miles paved. Now, part of that was because uh, we put a spending freeze in. And we just put a kind of a freeze on paving. You'll see in a in a coming slide that we're we're reinvesting that money. In FY twenty one. And if you average twenty and twenty one out, you would get much. Closer to the number in nineteen, or actually a little bit above nineteen. Um, but, um. I think that this slide is important because uh, there's no doubt that price per ton has an impact. On the amount of roads that uh, uh, that that Snowden screws get to pave. Um, you 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 will note and remember that he got a pavement management. System this year. Um, they were actually reviewing stuff today. The overall condition index of our roads in Knox County uh came out to be a seventy three. Um. Jim says that a seventy three is is better than most. They, he was very happy. Um.
Is that a seventy three out of a hundred?
Yep. And so, um, uh, where where a lot of our. Bad roads ended up being were like dead end roads that aren't aren't traveled a lot. They got like in the thirty percents. And so people don't travel, so they don't call and complain. But the other roads. Um, were in were were in fairly good shape. And so, uh, he was telling me today that we currently with the use of. Of with the use of, um. Um. Oh, my mind's left me, um. State aid, thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, w- with state aid, we spend about six million dollars a year on on repaving. Um. He he says that his goal would be, we'd like to get that that number closer to eight to nine. Uh, he thinks seven to eight would keep our index about the same at seventy three. Eight to nine, you could make some improvements. Um, and so, um, that's something that that will work with Jim on as we work with his budget. Um, but ultimately seventy three was was a good number. They. The uh, the company that that came in and did the analysis said that. Uh, that it was something that that we should be happy with. They've given us, they've given us some ideas about. Uh, putting ten percent of our budget into preventative maintenance and it helps to extend the the life of the road. Which which makes sense, which oftentimes helps oh y- your overall OCI. And so ultimately, what Jim will have here soon. Is a list of of roads and jobs that are are going to be paved based off the pavement management system. And based off OCI.
Oh, before I call in Commissioners, I just add one thing. I had a meeting with uh, engineering and public works to Jim and the team in the fall. And we we often talk about how fast our community is growing. And this is a great chart to really point out one thing. We have about two thousand center line miles of road that Knox County owns and maintains. And, you know, and when I asked, I said, just to sort of based upon the life of the road, the use, all the variables that go into it. You know, what what amount should we be paving every year just to kind of keep up with baseline maintenance? Um, and and improve, you know, just condition and and he said about ten percent. Well. That's two hundred. At our peak, we've only ever done fifty, sixty. In this chart, it looks like fifty was about our peak. So every year, and this is something I think Commissioner Buster brings up quite often when we talk about zonings. Is every year, every month, when we add more and more and more and more roads to our inventory. The gap of what we're doing. To just keep up with the basics and what we really need to be doing to get ahead of a growing community is growing every single day. And so I would argue as we look at this, while Jim has a goal of moving us from essentially a C to a B. We really ought to be figuring out how to go from a C to an A so we can keep up with the long term growth. Um, otherwise, we're really, you know, we're we're getting to get into a huge pinch down the road and that growth, that. Gap is going to grow exponentially as we grow as a county. So, uh, Commissioner Smith, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chris, going back to the the revenue and expenses engineering graph that you had. Um. I'm curious that that doesn't include debt service, does it?
It does not, no.
We haven't even gotten to the fun topic of debt yet. It's coming.
One of the next slide is basically just two uh. Metrics of data that was on that one slide, just looking at price per ton versus miles paved. The the difference in this one is we did include FY twenty one. And um, you can see a little bit of a decrease in price per ton and then. More of like a V from twenty to twenty one and paving. Um, from the standpoint of getting to take some of that money that we didn't spend in twenty. And spending in a twenty one.
Comment on that, something that uh, I was told a few years back, and that is the. Price per ton of asphalt has nothing to do with the price of gasoline or oil. It's a byproduct of the production. And the price is more relevant based upon the amount of production and available product to make asphalt with, which was. Something I thought kind of interesting.
Commissioner Daly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris.
Hmm?
Uh, when we do our contracts, I probably asked Jim this, but I don't remember. Are we locked in from the fiscal twenty twenty one price or does it fluctuate on the cost of the asphalt?
Uh, he would know better than I. I think it's. I think it's locked in, but there could be a floater. I don't know how that works. Uh, check with him. He'll know that better than I.
I know that we don't hedge or or pre buy. I do know that, but I don't know what our contract lengths are. Um, be interesting question. I don't see any other hands up, Chris, if you want to.
They're getting into debt. What we have here is a look at debt from FY eleven to FY twenty. And so what you have in the blue bars is uh, total debt. Uh, the yellow, excuse me, the orange line is debt service expenses. And then uh, just a linear look on the dotted line of where uh, our debt service was versus where it's heading. And so, uh. What you see is um, basically, um. In FY twenty, we spent about uh, seventy two, seventy three million. On debt service expenses, just to service the debt. Um, and so, uh. But what you have seen from eleven to twenty is a little bit of a concerted effort. To get uh, our total debt down. And so, uh, so you'll see two little peaks there. Uh, one in seventeen, uh, the growth in seventeen were because of the construction of Harden. Valley and Gibbs M- Middle School. Uh, those totaled about seventy million. Dot dollars. And so that leaves that to be a a little spike there in total debt service.
Um, well, hey, Chris, one thing to point out, I I is in this, because you and I had this discussion earlier is although. When you look at a lot of the revenue slides, that it doesn't include, um, that's, we're looking at general fund, but we're not looking at schools. When we're looking at debt. We're looking at both at everything because the school's debt is our debt. It's all, we're all in the same bucket there. So. It want to make sure everybody understands that. The front half of this presentation was all about sort of what directly impacts Knox County that doesn't flow through the schools, but. This slide shows everything.
This is the total debt service for all of Knox County, including Knox County Schools. So. Uh, the state makes us report all um, of the debt. And so in theory, all debt is Knox County. Um, and so it gets, it looks really funny when we go to. An S and P, that wasn't me. Um, and um. And so we get all the debt, but but none of the assets. And so it's a it 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 kind of a weird gauge. The the the. You'll see then eighteen drops way down and then nineteen kind of pops back up. The reason for that is we waited and issued both debt service for eight, both. A bond issues for eighteen eighteen to nineteen and nineteen. So that really would be more leveled out. If we would have issued in eighteen and issued in nineteen, but 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 we combined two two issues. And then, as you are well aware, we're doing Wandsdale, Adrian Burnett and a new Northwest. El- elementary school. Those are will be reflected in FY twenty one and twenty two. And so, um, what you have here is we think we'll continue to see. Uh, debt service expenses around, you know, seventy to seventy five million. Um, we feel those are manageable. Um, it's less than ten percent of our total budget, so it's not. A terrible spot to be in. Um, now, of course, would we like it to to be lower? Of course, everybody would. Uh, but you know, if there's, um, you got to measure out. Um, what you want to do uh, versus um, what what money that you have. And so. Uh, and on the flip side of that, um, as well is uh, money is really cheap right now, right? And so, um, you know, taking advantage of money that's cheap. Uh. Helps us because it it we we always get a a premium on our bonds. And so that coupled with a really low interest rate enables us to do a lot more pro- projects. Than we could when interest rates are four and five percent. Debt per capita, this is something that always gets talked about a little bit. And so these are in order, uh, debt per capita. And so. Uh, what you have and I'm just going to focus on FY nineteen. Uh, Davidson's debt per capita is right at ninety four hundred dollars. Um, Hamilton, that's not in order, but, um. Williamson County is at three thousand, six eighteen. Rutherford's at one thousand, seven sixty six. We are at one thousand, five sixty eight. Uh, Se- Sevier's at one thousand, three sixteen. Shelby is at one thousand, forty six dollars and then Hamilton is at one thousand, thirty four dollars. And so we fall about right in the middle. Um. That I know that Shelby Cat County has made a concerted effort in the last four or five years to really pay down their debt service. And so. Uh, you see there that their debt per capita um, has gotten to 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 be in a better spot. And, um. Davidson's, of course, is uh, really uh, just. Higher than anybody else's. And so, um, I'll ask you all a couple of questions just to see if anybody wants to guess. Does anybody want to guess what the state of Tennessee's debt per capita is?
I'm seeing no guesses.
Ten thousand.
Uh, eight hundred and eighty two dollars. And so, uh, the state, you know, don't really issue debt for road projects. And so they don't really have a lot of debt. And so a lot of that will probably be pension debt, I guess. And so, um. That's where that comes from. Now, here's you a better one. What do you think the US debt per capita is?
Three trillion dollars.
Uh, forty five thousand.
The 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 one I found today said sixty nine thousand. Uh, now you can probably find some others that say some different things, but uh, sixty nine was was the one that I found today. Off a a website that I thought that was.
And Chris, tell us, tell us again what ours is.
Knox County?
Yeah.
Uh.
It's fifteen sixty eight.
Yep.
I think you should update that national number at each month at the work session.
Richie, why do you want to put bad work on me?
We'll expect a check from each of you for fifteen hundred and sixty eight dollars at the next meeting. Yes, Chairman, my apologies, but I do have a four thirty meeting I have to attend, so. All right, thank you. All right, Chris.
Final slide that I have, I thought you all would would like this slide, total debt comparison. Um, Davidson Cat County, if you if you must knows. At uh, five point eight billion in total debt. And so you kind of see there, um, Shelby County is at nine hundred and seventy thousand. Um, we are at six seventy seven. Uh, Wi- Williamson's at six sixty two. Uh, we think they probably pass us in FY twenty, just so you know. Um, and and severe is at a hundred and eighteen thou- a hundred and eighteen million. So it's funny, i- if you're severe, you were at a hundred, you're you're at a hundred and eighteen million. Uh, I've lost my debt per capita number, but but they were at a fairly high debt per capita number because their population, of course, is lower. And so.
Now, Chris, this is the current debt bonded debt on the books. This isn't the obligation of what it will cost us. If you were to pay everything off today, then it would be this amount, but it what it will cost us over time is a whole different number, correct?
Right. This is just looking at principal only.
And do you have any idea what that number is of the principal for interest? I mean, our debt is over a billion.
Uh, it's actually under that a little bit now. We're probably around nine fifty.
Okay.
Um, interest rates really low now, so it helps us on some of our of our variable rate debt. And so, um. You know, ultimately, um, you know, the things that I look at, uh, on total debt. Uh. Uh, Shelby and FY sixteen was at one point one billion. At the end of of nineteen, they were down to nine hundred and seventy thou- it's nine hundred and seventy million. And so they've made a a concerted effort to kind of pay. Um, uh, Davidson's went from four point nine billion to five point eight billion. Well, Williamson's went from five hundred and seventeen million to six hundred and sixty three. Um, million. So that's just as an example, I mean, and and Rutherford County. And Rutherford County may be the fastest growing county in the state, I think, is three, was it three thirty two and sixteen and is it four sixty four and nineteen? And so, um. Just some things there. Um, but I'll answer anything that you have. That concludes my presentation. Um, and I'm sure you're bored to tears, but.
No, it's actually been really good dialogue. I think a lot of good questions. Uh, Commissioner Skunmaker, you're first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chris, you and I have talked about Davidson County and their debt. And by uh, June thirtieth of this year, they were supposed to pay about two hundred and fifty million dollars towards their debt. Do you know if they're making their payments on time?
I had.
Comptroller was very concerned about their financial status.
Yeah, you know, you know, the comptroller before pandemic and before the tornadoes and all that. Had had went and talked to their council. Um, and and made a presentation. I've not heard anything else about. and made a presentation. I've not heard anything else about that. I know, of course, they went through and had a thirty three percent property tax increase, I believe. And so I'm assuming that they're making their debt service payments. But I've I've not heard anything official on that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bustler, I think you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some time ago, Chris, you know, I had made this comment about that additional sales tax that was laying on the table that the state could take. And I said, why don't you think about, you know, doing a SPOT tax, which is, you know, special optional sales tax that you could especially sound it to paying a debt. And I just made that statement and everybody jumped on me that I was trying to raise taxes. But if we leave it there on the table, they can, the state can take it. And they could take it right out of our county and that money. So anyway, if you did pass a sales that going up to two point seven five and you made it a SPOT tax, special optional sales tax to go to pay against certain debts, but it's only a limited time only, and then you have to redirect it to other debt services we have, wouldn't that be a better option than just laying it on the table and the state being able to take it?
I think so. The county's piece of of the local option sales tax was, I think I said, was about ten million. I think even I think even with the SPOT tax, you would still have to give half of it to to schools. I think the I think the first half has to go to education. So that would only leave five. If you're doing a SPOT tax, I, you know, you could you could dedicate it toward debt service. And I'm assuming a SPOT tax would would be, I've never really researched SPOT taxes much. I'm assuming that it would be the same thing. You'd have to go before the voters and get approved. And so I guess the difference is you would be putting a sunset on it rather than it going into perpetuity.
Well, that's the major part. See, like you went to Fulton County in Georgia. They redid just about every school on the on that SPOT tax. But it is a limited time and you have to reapportion it every time that you use it. And that way, it just doesn't go into the general fund and goes for wherever it wants to go. It's to pay down the debt on the debt service we do have. And or we could just leave it there on the table. And if the state takes it, we still lose the money. It still goes, you know, we still have to pay it here in this county. And I was just wondering, it kind of gets kind of scary that they can come in and pull it and say, okay, we'll just take it out of the county.
Good comments. Commissioner Daley, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, you may not know the answer to this because I thought schools would be on with us today. Had a question from a South Knoxville resident. With schools being out quite a bit, going to virtual learning, he wanted to know if there could be reduction in property tax. And I don't think so because even though the kids are not in school, we still have salaries. We still have lights. It's got to be done, heating, cooling, no matter what. So I guess, if you would, do you think that we there was been any savings at all during this pandemic?
Here's what I would say. I would say, and Ron can speak this to speak to this much more more than I could. I think, you know, for the moment, this fiscal year, this school year, you've had some kids that are virtual, some that are in school. So I don't know if you had really any savings because you're having to keep all campuses open. And so I think if anything, the schools have had additional expenses that's related to virtual learning. You you all have approved some of the contracts for the the virtual learning, the the one to one technology. The the, you know, we did a grant for trying to get every student the ability to to be able to have Wi Fi. And so I do not believe there is a savings because basically those buildings are not closed. They're still open and you just have the option of going virtual.
Yeah, we during the Ed Education Committee meeting, the schools told us they're ten million dollars above in just the PPE equipment.
Sure.
Over what? Ten million dollars over in that. So that's an amazing number.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Chris, looking at our, I think you said our current debt level is six hundred and seventy million. They're about six sixty, somewhere in there. We have three schools and some major road projects in our five year capital plan. I'm assuming that's going to be, I don't know, was it fifty million?
Yeah, I think the schools are, you know, fifteen to eighteen apiece, probably. I think actually, I think they're about eight to eight. I think with the increase in construction cost, I think the schools are probably going to be like eighteen to twenty now.
Okay. And then is Shaw Road completely funded yet?
I think we may have the final piece of it coming this year. We'll get with Jim. He's not turning his budget yet. Not that it's not due yet, but I think maybe the final piece is coming this year or it'll show up in the five year plan.
Okay, so we're looking at, say, let's say, six sixty, fifty, sixty million in new new debt the next five years. What is the offset on our on our on our on our schedule, our pay down schedule? Where do you think we're going to land in about five years?
You know, ultimately, we so he had Shaw Road going, got Randy, just so you know, to about two to FY twenty three. And so we'll see how that goes. But ultimately, pay down. We have over the next twenty one through twenty five, we have planned bond payments of about two hundred and twenty eight million. And so, you know, as long as you know, we can stay within that number, hopefully lower, then we can actually actually pay down some of that and not increase our total our total bonded indebtedness.
Okay, now, that was debt service, wasn't it, the two hundred and twenty eight million? Or was that the reduction off the books of bonds?
That's what we would pay. So that would be the revenue, the revenue to pay down the debt service. Well, actually, I'm sorry, no. I'm telling you wrong. The planned principal payments on bonds for the next five years is two hundred and twenty point seven. And so in our five year plan, we had we had planned bond issuances of about two twenty eight, which is about seven million, the opposite way that we like to go. Now, what we don't show when those schedules, though, are premiums. And so what we can do is use the premium deal just to lower the that that amount. And sometimes our premiums, you know, are quite substantial.
Okay, one last question that comes to how that schedule reduces. I know when Harden Valley was built, it was built with interest only thirty year bonds. We should start to get into that at some point. That will show a reduction on the liability side far greater than normal debt service would do because we're hitting big strokes of principles in the in the amount of what? Five, six million a year?
Seven or eight, I think.
I think it's seven and a half for Harden Valley.
I think it's right. So I think we start paying that in twenty twenty seven. And the principal piece goes to like twenty thirty four. Now, you know, the good news is we've got that programmed in our our schedule. So so we have the ability to 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 make those debt service payments. But it will help as from from the standpoint of lowering our our principal bonded indebtedness amount.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Chris or the team about anything you've seen here? Or a lot to digest, but good information nonetheless. Chris, I'm not seeing anything. So I know if you do have to drop off, but we will send the recording out and the information. I've got the slide deck and appreciate everybody's time today. Lots of good information and appreciate all the hard work, Chris.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great afternoon.